Yeah, please, if you take your seats. We will call this meeting to order. And as with all of our meetings, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are going to start this meeting with a public hearing. The Arundel Select Board will conduct a public hearing at the Arundel Municipal Building at 7:00 at 257 Limerick Road. The purpose will be to determine whether they will issue an order to discontinue a portion of the cul-de-sac turnaround at the end of Clearview Drive and to determine damages, if any, will be paid to the abutting property owners. And it says the public is welcome to attend. If you have a comment, please come down to the table, sit down, state your name. And if someone has already made the comment that you wish to make, please don't duplicate because we're not, we're pretty sure this is going to take a while. So we'll start with public comments. And if you just raise your hand, please have a seat and state your name. I think that's turned on.
It may not be.
How's that?
There you go.
Can I just ask a question? Is the video on tonight? Did we get that fixed?
All set.
Excellent. I appreciate that because there were a lot of public comments last time that I think the people outside the room should have opportunity to hear. And I'm here, Peter Gillingham, 185 Maplewood Drive. I'm in opposition to this and I'm going to express the points I expressed last time mostly for the video. I think you understand my point of view. I do agree there's a cul-de-sac issue and a land issue, but the cul-de-sac has been there for 40 years. And I think we should leave it the way it is or make an adjustment to the land so the property owners have their correct amount of land and just put a driveway in. There's a cul-de-sac that's serving one home and only one home. And the cul-de-sac at this time, at times in the last year and a half, has been commandeered at times as their own driveway. They put cones up, blocked school buses, et cetera. That's not what should be happening on a public road. My worry is if we go through the plan that's proposed, Mr. Thomas will have paid for a road. Then if the development down the road doesn't go through, I feel he'll have a more of an emotional connection to the road because he's paid for it. Although it might be, seem like a thrifty thing for the town of Arundel to have someone pay for a section of a road. I'm not sure it's the best plan moving forward in developing a community in a development that we have now. I think this is really the first step in an unapproved development. And I think it should wait. Down the road, if the development is approved, then fine. You don't put in a short road and then make a long road. You put in a road for a development. So I stand in opposition to this. And I think we should, one, leave it the way it is, or two, go back to the drawing board, just put a driveway in. The driveway to a house. The cul-de-sac is functioning as a driveway. It should be a public road, but at times it's not treated as a public road. And it should definitely be treated as a public road. So I stand in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Yep, yep, oh. Okay. Please hold your applause till the end. Yes, please. Identify yourself.
Hello, I'm Cameron Ferrante. I'm an attorney of Preity Flaherty. I'm here tonight with Mr. Thomas, whose property is at issue. So I just wanted to address the issue of that has been raised tonight already and in virtually every public hearing that's been held on this, which was relating to the obstruction of the cul-de-sac and also the blocking of a school bus. So there's really been no evidence presented showing or supporting any of those claims. The only time there's been any type of investigation as to blocking or obstruction of school buses, the police department came out, they reviewed the available evidence, and it was determined that Mr. Thomas had done nothing wrong. I think it's important for the board and for the public to focus on the question that's actually before them tonight, which is really whether discontinuing this makes sense. What's being proposed is essentially removing a cul-de-sac, replacing it with a hammerhead, and discontinuing a portion of a town road that isn't on where the road actually is built right now and doesn't really serve the purpose that it was intended to serve, which is to serve three lots. So I think my client's taken a lot of flack on social media and in comments before this board and before the planning board about alleged allegations that he's obstructed this cul-de-sac. And as far as I've seen, none of that has actually borne out. And the only time it's ever been investigated, it was determined that he had done nothing wrong. So I'd appreciate it if the board and the public could potentially try to stay focused on the question that's actually before them, which is the discontinuation and the determination of damages, if any. So, thank you.
Thank you. Raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Go ahead. Yep.
My name is Sarah. You hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Sarah Carrier and I live at 59 Clearview. I think I'd like to address the social media that was just presented a minute ago. And I believe it goes both ways. And the admins of certain pages will take down anything that they feel is untrue. So it really has nothing, using social media is what it is. It's not something that the town controls. So I think it's prudent that we all stay out of it. Tonight I'm speaking in opposition because I'm deeply concerned about the proposed hammerhead turnaround on Laurel Circle and the way that this project is being presented. What's being framed as a simple road improvement is in fact something much more. It's a strategic move by a private developer to gain access for a new development project. We must not be misled. A vote for this hammerhead is a vote for that development. This isn't just about solving a problem that suddenly became a problem after 42 years, eight of those-ish being under, being owned by Mr. Thomas. It's becoming an issue now because a year ago, we were all here defending the limiting of access for our road to become a cut through to a new development. And one of the sticking points our lawyers found was that you cannot have a road off a loop in a Rundle or Maine. I forget if it was a city ordinance or a state ordinance. And this is just another tactic to create an access point for that future subdivision. One that was already denied because it did violate the offshoot of the road. Now it's being repackaged under this plan as the guise of him being a helpful citizen, claiming he's just trying to save the town money. But make no mistake, this is just another attempt to push the same agenda through by dressing it up as a favor to the town. Why would someone spend thousands of dollars on engineering, legal filings, and property modifications if they didn't expect something in return? This is not charity. This is a calculated investment and we would be foolish to ignore the motive. He may say he's being a good citizen, but in reality, he's caused frustration and division in this community from issues that have arisen not just from our neighborhood, but from Arundel in general. We are now being told that if the town doesn't approve this, there may be legal consequences. Pursued as what he said last meeting. That is a scare tactic. There are always ways for the town to rectify these concerns without giving in to threats or peer pressure. Don't let fear of litigation drive public decision-making. Who will be responsible if something goes wrong? If the new pavement collapses, if flooding occurs, or if storm water systems fail? Will the new developer, aka Mr. Thomas, repair it at his own cost five years from now? Or will the town and its taxpayers be on the hook for the bill after it does become a public road? Once a private project is built on public land, the burden shifts to the town. That's the reality of municipal liability. It's the people of Arundel who will be stuck with the long-term consequence of this short-term decision. Beyond the environmental and legal concerns, we must also ask, what kind of precedent are we setting? If we allow a private developer to fund and control modifications to town infrastructure for personal gain, we invite future developers to do the same. That weakens our public process and undermines the authority of this board. But frankly, this hammerhead plan should be rejected tonight. It's not necessary. As we heard in last town meeting, no plow or bus driver has complained about difficulty with operating the way the road stands right now. We have a right to preserve the feel and character of our neighborhood. We don't want Clearview to be the new, new road that's a cut through from one area to another. We don't want our road in our neighborhood to feel like Limerick Road, where no one feels safe walking from house to house. Nobody feels safe letting their kids ride their bikes on the side of the road. Clearview and Maplewood will just become a thoroughway. Effects from this proposed road change will literally pave the way to a road for a new development that will increase traffic in already difficult areas such as New Road and the corner of Limerick and Route 111. It will also strain civic services because you are adding to the population. Right now, Arundel's growth rate is already higher than what is recommended by the state. And we are feeling like the effects of that, we're becoming the effects of the spillover from Bedford and Kennebunk. Is that how we want to grow as an overflow option for nearby towns? Or do we want thorough, thoughtful, deliberate, resident-driven development that takes into account the priorities the citizens of this town have? We're not against change. We are against exploitation. We are asking this board to stand with the residents of Clearview Estates and protect our neighborhood from the development disguised as the solution to this 42-year-old problem. Please vote no on the hammerhead project so that we can maintain our environment, infrastructure, and the community neighborhood that we enjoy currently. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Good evening.
Yep.
I'm going to speak how I feel. I'm, thank you. Pollen's racing the dickens out of me. Can you hear me now?
Yes, and Phil, just state your name.
Phil Tashro, 204 Maplewood. Excuse me, it's going to be a struggle. I'm here to represent the children of our neighborhood, the children of other adjoining neighborhoods that use our development as a safe place for our children to play. We have seniors that walk their dogs. We have kids, multiple families with children that frequent our neighborhood on a regular basis. What concerns us is how many places in Arundel do we have where kids can ride in the road, walk their dogs without cars speeding by? When you walk on the side of the road, a friend of mine was dragged 50 feet from a gentleman pulling a trailer. Never saw her, she was on a bicycle. We don't want this to become a freeway. This is our home. We value it. We value our neighbors, our friends, even you officials. What worries us is have we become structural? Where we look at what we have to do and pass it on to the next person to deal with it. I think we have more ties to this town than a lot of us give us credit for. I've given 23 years to scouting because I value our town values. We live in a town that people really respect us. They come to our neighborhood, they feel safe. It's not the new road, as mentioned earlier. It's becoming a freeway. And those of us that have what we have, value it very much. And to address the truth, we witnessed what was going on in the cul-de-sac. I lived there for 40-plus years. The original owner of Mr. Thomas's house belonged to Steve and Lonnie York. After they moved, we've never had a problem. In fact, we used to use the turnaround, the cul-de-sac, as a community meeting place. We had, you can, not parties, but gatherings for the kids. We put up amusements. We had cookouts. It was just a neighborhood place to meet. And it would devastate me to see that change. I say, leave what's there. The town accepted the road. Yes, Mr. DuBois made a mistake. But the town representative was there. It was accepted by the town. Why now is it different? Mr. Thomas lived in, moved to our neighborhood because maybe it was safe for his children. But anyways, after eight years living there, the last three has changed. Now he's concerned about the turnaround. The town has done what it can to maintain our development. The cul-de-sac is part of us. It represents a community that's tight-knit. And this I ask you to consider. We're not regimented to structure. When we look at something, we have to put the human element in place. This is a place that's safe. All of us will testify to that. We need something in this town that we can hold on to. It makes us Arundel. With that being said, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Phil. Yes, the lady in the back.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dolores Smith. I live at 124 Clearview Drive. My husband and I moved, we built into this neighborhood 31 years ago. And at the time, subdivisions were very popular. They were everywhere, but everywhere we looked, it was phase one of phase five. You know, we didn't want that. We wanted just one inclusive neighborhood. We specifically asked before we bought in here if this was going to be just a single face, and we were told yes. That's why we live here. We could have gone elsewhere. We live here. And when we came here, it ended up becoming a sense of community. You know, Phil Tashro was just talking about our neighborhood family gatherings where we had in the green at the cul-de-sac. We had a bouncy house and we had barbecues and games and scavenger hunts and the the lawnmower parade in there. It was, it was a fun family thing. We looked forward to that every year. Okay? And then we started our family. And then the neighborhood became more of a safety issue. We knew that nobody was flying through that neighborhood because we lived here. And there was no other reason to be in our neighborhood if you didn't live here. It was really important to us. We all live in Clearview Estates for a reason. We paid more money to live in this neighborhood because of how close and out of the way, and it's not a throughway. We love our community. We love the general peacefulness in here. That's what our subdivision is all about. And we don't want that taken away from us. And that's why I oppose this proposal that Mr. Thomas is doing.
Thank you. Yes, the lady in the back.
Can I speak on behalf of somebody else that just sent me a text that's in the development?
Is it on something that someone else here hasn't already spoken about?
Nope, nope. It's her thoughts on this. Yes?
I don't know. I
I'll start, and if you say no, I'll
All right, if you'd have a seat and give us your name and then give us her name and
My name's Margaret Sylvain. I'm on Maplewood Drive, and I'm speaking on behalf of Lauren Roach, who lives on Clearview.
Okay.
She says, my name is Lauren Roach, and unfortunately, due to a high-stakes Little League game, I'm unable to attend. My husband and I moved onto 112 Clearview last August after searching for years for the perfect home and neighborhood for us, our three children and dog. I have sat in on recent town meetings, and I am appreciative that we have the opportunity to share our concerns over the possible changes in the cul-de-sac. A change that, as we all know, is phase one of a bigger plan that would disrupt the level of safety and peace that our neighborhood currently enjoys and that we were so drawn to. It's quite disappointing to imagine what we waited for so long, waited so long for, may become what we were looking to avoid. I hope our voting community recognizes that moving forward with this project would set a precedent that puts developments at risk when personal gain is valued over community. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Now, this public hearing that is being held tonight and the, the comments that you're making, if this article goes through from here, it will be in the town report book and it will go to the Arundel Town Meeting, the regular town meeting that we have every year in June. And that will be the case where all Arundel voters that are at that town meeting will have a chance to vote on that article. Do we have any other comments that haven't already been stated? Oh, oh, yeah.
What's the procedure?
At town meeting, there is usually comment. The moderator of the town meeting may specify that comments will be kept to, say, three minutes. And that, again, if someone has already made that comment, please don't duplicate it. All right, yeah, Diane?
Sorry, but I haven't, Diane Robbins, Mokes, Arundel, Maine. Haven't had any internet all day, so. In June, as the citizens of this town, we're going to have an opportunity to vote on this. What I don't like seeing is I don't like seeing some of the signs and postings that I've seen accusing people of doing things, accusing people, specifically boards, of approving of the project when they simply went by the rules that are in place. Although some of those rules really need to be looked at. The only purpose for this lam swat at this point is because they were told they could not put a road through the cul-de-sac. I was at that planning board meeting. And it was the planner at the time, Feldman, who said, oh, just put a, put a hammerhead in. Didn't know that we were in that business. The cul-de-sac was in the wrong place when York bought the property. And that goes way back. Because they owned it for almost 20 years. I think they were like one or two months shy of being in that home for 20 years when they sold it. The deeds, while they don't have the paperwork for the land in the fashion that I guess legal would like to see it done in, those deeds contain mention of the consent decree. It gives the book, it gives the page, and it gives pictures of the cul-de-sac and the area that was supposed to be handed over. It was because I looked at these deeds that I asked you to ensure that going forward, that there is a process for these consent agreements. Because this consent agreement was done while DuBois still owned that piece of property. And it should have been done right then and there. Nobody picked up on it when it got bought by the Yorks. And to the best of my knowledge, I haven't seen anything at the selectmen's meetings or any other meetings with anybody that's questioned this cul-de-sac after 2016 until we got into putting in the subdivision. Apparently, this isn't the only time this has happened. It appears that we may have to go back and just look at our subdivisions. I've been to, I don't even know how many meetings on subdivisions. I've sat on committees. I sat on the committee that did the seasonal cottages. I sat on the committee that worked with the planning board when we did Kate's Butter. I'm very knowledgeable about what's in there. What I don't understand is how you can approve a subdivision that has no flipping road. I'm just going to say it. How do you approve a subdivision? I don't care how pretty it looks. If you have no road, you have no subdivision. And we've let them get this far. This makes us look bad. So we don't have a process for consent agreements to make sure they get taken care of. Apparently, we approve subdivisions even though they don't have a road to and from the subdivision. We should not be passing anything through a planning board if there is no road. I don't know how that happens. I've said it to them. They don't care. This is wrong. It's wrong to the citizens that live in this town. It's wrong because this isn't the only area where lots have been divided up in a subdivision. Subdivisions, and I'm going to repeat myself for the umpteenth time. Subdivisions are designed and built to give people a community. And unless that community is marked with phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four, phase five, as someone had mentioned earlier, they didn't want to get into a subdivision that had various phases in it. The seasonal cottages was very clear. Road one, road two, road three, road four, and I believe they're on five. Haven't had much issue with them except they wanted to stay in longer. But when you start taking subdivisions that have no mapped roads on the original subdivision plan, I don't understand why you're putting a road in or why you're allowing a road in. It wasn't on the original subdivision that was approved. And I don't care if he buys property in the back, on the side, in the front. I don't care where he bought it. If the subdivision is not telling the rest of the people that are living in that subdivision that there's going to be a road there at some point, or there could be, then that's wrong. And we're wrong by supporting it. We've done it there. We've done it other places. We've had other lots within subdivision that have been divided. Subdivisions are built with a specific lot. It says you can only put one house on that lot. But now I'm hearing, well, this is common practice and they're allowing them to split the lots because we reduced the acreage that's needed. I don't believe that I've seen anything in the subdivision rules that says that you can go in a subdivision after the fact and go change. So is that what we're going to do now? We're going to take a subdivision that has three-acre lots and we're going to drop it down to one because that's what we decided to do? And then we let everybody divide their lots into three in a subdivision? We're going down a slippery road. This is a very, very slippery road. And this is a slippery road over pure greed. Because they don't want to spend the money to go in through the golf course. They would prefer to go through a road that the people in this town are paid for. We didn't pay to put it in, but we voted to accept it. We've tied it, we've maintained it, and we plow it. Now, the cul-de-sac. The cul-de-sac is fine. I walked it, I looked at it. Is it small? Yes. But it's not meant to handle 15 houses. Only meant to be a cul-de-sac for three houses. Not a cul-de-sac or an area for an additional 15. So not only do I not support this, but I think as selectmen and even the planning board, we need to go back and we need to look at some of our regulations and how our things are set up to ensure that we don't continue to do this. Because if we do, we're going to look like Bedford. And we're going to have them coming out of everywhere. And I don't think people who are buying in this town are buying because they want to find 15, 20 more houses coming down their street. Thank you. Thank you.
Phil, you've already...
......................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Sorry, Cam Ferrante again. So my first comment was really just to address those allegations about blocking the cul-de-sac. But I also want to talk a little bit more about the actual order of discontinuance and what it's trying to do here and what I think are issues that are actually before the board.
Yep. You're going to have to pull the microphone closer to you.
Okay, I'll try not to swallow it. But, so I just want to focus on, you know, what actually is before the board with the order of discontinuance. So the question is really, is the board going to approve this discontinuance? Which is just, as I said before, you know, a portion of the cul-de-sac which would really be replaced by this hammerhead turnaround and includes a portion where the cul-de-sac actually isn't even located currently. It's, you know, not the actual location of the cul-de-sac, it's where it was originally supposed to be. So that element of the discontinuance, I don't think is necessarily contentious. It seems like people are primarily concerned with the risk of future development and neighborhood safety and impacts to the community. And I think all of those concerns are properly addressed in front of the planning board or in front of the select board in certain circumstances in relation to a future application, which isn't what's before the board tonight. There will be public hearings on any potential future development. There will be opportunities for comment and concerns. There will be need to adhere to the town's various ordinances regarding traffic safety, circulation, speed limits, all of those types of things that I think would adequately address any of these concerns. But tonight, the question is, does the town want to move forward with discontinuing this portion, this portion of the cul-de-sac, which isn't where the cul-de-sac is actually located? And I think it would be appropriate for the board to approve the order of discontinuance and send it to the voters at the town meeting to determine how the town as a whole feels, rather than just the people who appear to be most invested in it. I think this is, you know, an elegant solution to this particular project or to this particular issue and this particular problem because this issue has affected the entire subdivision for, as we've heard, 40 years. And there's been no movement to address it as a whole. There's been no overarching solution. Mr. Thomas is interested in fixing the problem that he deals with every day, which is an improperly located cul-de-sac on his private property. And he wants to address that. And this is the resolution that we've come up with and presented to the town. So I think the important questions for the select board here tonight are, is this appropriate? And if so, should any damages be paid out to any of the abutters? With respect to who are the abutters? Under state law, it's the select board's prerogative to determine whether damages should be awarded to any abutting property owner. That's an owner of property abutting the area of a road that's actually to be discontinued. If you look at the description of the property in the order of discontinuance, as well as the plans that are associated with this, there's really only one property owner who's abutting the area to be discontinued, other than Mr. Thomas, and that's the Morins. I believe it's the town's intention, should this go forward, to actually release that property formally to the Morins. And it's my understanding that they have actually been paying taxes on that portion of the property for a number of years. So I think in this, in these circumstances, I don't know that an award of damages is necessarily appropriate or needed, simply because the Morins will be obtaining property and their access to their property won't be affected, their ability to use the portion of Clearview Drive, which will remain, won't be affected. So I think a determination of no damages would be appropriate. With respect to the Evrets who own the former Budarazi property, they're on the other side of the road, they're on the portion of the road that's proposed to be kept and not discontinued. So I don't believe there's any obligation on the board's part to award damages to them. Mr. Thomas has already agreed in front of the planning board to certain concessions or modifications to the plan intended to minimize any impact to their property that would result from this discontinuance and the creation of the hammerhead. He's agreed to move the roadway further from the property line. He's agreed to maintain a vegetated buffer between the road and their property to ensure that there's, you know, minimal interference or, you know, whether it's from noise or light or anything like that from people using the hammerhead turnaround. So I think in this circumstance where they're not truly in a butter and there've already been significant steps taken to mitigate any impact to their property, I think no damages would also be reasonable in that regard. So that's my spiel with respect to damages and also just, you know, asking the board to focus on the question that's actually before, which is the question of discontinuance, not concerns about potential future development, concerns about neighborhood continuity or traffic impacts or anything. I think all of those are properly dealt with in front of the planning board as part of any future development application and would have to comply with all of the town's ordinances and processes as part of that process, but I don't think are really before the board here. So that's my...
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have someone else?
I wasn't planning on speaking this evening. My name is Paulette Moran and I am the true abutter. What if I don't want to send that portion of my land? Is it just going to be taken? What if I do not want to sell that piece of property? What choice do I have? Is it going to be taken? And is, these are just words, when, when you say that, you know, it, it, it's going to be sold? I don't want to sell it. So where do we go from here?
I don't believe, Paulette, on the plan that I've seen, if I remember, that portion of your property wouldn't be sold. I think if this goes through, you will end up getting a little piece of your property back.
Yeah, you'll gain property.
You'll gain the property you've been paying taxes on, which apparently is part of the, either the cul-de-sac now or the, or the original. But there's a small piece that if this goes through, if it passes, and if it passes at town meeting, you will end up getting a little piece of your property back.
But it's already mine. Why does it have to be deeded away from me and then given it back to me? It makes no sense. It's, it's, it's mine. We've been paying, my husband and I have been paying taxes on it for over 36 years. Plus, why is it going to be taken away from me when I already own it and then give it back? It makes no sense to me. I want it to be left alone. I don't want it to be deeded over to someone else and then deeded back to me. I want it to be left alone. I don't want to sell it. I don't want to give it. I just want it to continue being part of my ownership, my deed.
That would be a question we'd have to talk to the town attorney about. But... All right. Yep.
There's no selling, there's no...
She should be talking to the mic.
And that little portion of property that, you know, I, I've been paying taxes on, it truly becomes a legal question. So again, I can advise you, but just to clarify, I don't want to touch anything else, but certainly, um, instead of...
Yeah. There would be no buying, there would be no selling. That property is still right there, it's, it's still yours. It, it just, I think if it go, if it's approved at town meeting, there would be a change on the plan where that little piece of property that you've been paying taxes on all those years, literally, the line changes and comes back so that it does show on the plan that, yes, that property is yours. Even though all these years, it's been yours and you've been paying taxes on it. Nothing will change. You want buying, you want selling.
Deeded over in order for it to be deeded back to me?
No. No, not as what I understand. But if that's a legal question, you might want to talk to your own attorney, have him look at the plans and let you know for sure.
Why have to get an attorney? Why do I have to get anyone? It belongs to me. It belongs to me. Why do I need to talk to anybody else about it when it's mine? And just because it's grayed out on somebody else's subdivision plan doesn't make it so. But yet, that's what it sounds like, they're going to take it away from me and then it's going to be deeded back to me. I, I, I just couldn't sit there and not come and, and, and talk to you about this.
Thank you.
Because it's not right.
I, I can't answer other than that.
I know.
Chip, I've just got a question. My understanding is that there was a consent agreement 40-some years ago because portions of the road were not located where they're supposed to be. Is that correct?
It's not 40, it's 30-some odd years.
Okay.
95.
Okay. Okay. 30 years and a couple of months. My understanding further is that there were actually four encroachments where the road, the physical road wasn't located where it was supposed to be according to subdivision plan, and it's actually on private property. Is that correct? Why isn't all of that being corrected now? Why is, why is this, why is the only issue being, that's being addressed, is the end of the road and not texting the whole thing?
We don't have any process in front of us, other than this. Nobody else has brought something forward, we've got nothing to act on.
Yeah. I, I would, I would think that the select board would want to follow through on a consent agreement, even if it was 30 years ago, and get it squared away.
What's in front of us addresses that circle.
It addresses all, all the pieces.
No.
Just, just the circle. We have, I'm, I'm going to allow this to take, go on for a few more minutes because we do have a couple more people who would like to speak. But other than that, I believe the comments that we've heard are pretty, are pretty, what you want us, what you want us to hear. Go ahead, please, and your name?
Mark Cody. I'm from Clearview Drive. Ran into a similar situation when our family sold our home in Sauk several years ago, back in the 50s, they made a development where shaws and the, the houses towards the river were put in in the early 50s and encrouched on our family's home, which we didn't realize until after the 80s or early 80s. And when we sold it, there was over 50 feet of property that we had been paying taxes on through the years from the, since that development had been in place. And they just basically said, it's been 30 years, you know, over 20 years, we can't do anything with it. I'm sorry, this is the way it is. And with the dissent agreements and so forth, I think that some of the answers have already been placed in front of you. There would be quite a disturbance in the neighborhood if you started changing things. We've got quite a bit of animals, we have deer, we have, you know, an abundance of wildlife in that area, and us has wildlife that live there. I think the young lady earlier said, you're just dressing something up differently. And I think putting lipstick, lipstick on a pig, it doesn't change the pig. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. There was someone else in the back?
Ariel Tashro, 204 Maplewood. So just expanding a little bit on one point that was brought up briefly. So I'm just questioning the necessity of adding the hammerhead as part of the proposal. I totally understand the intent behind the feature, you know, providing emergency access and whatnot, but feel that the solution may be excessive and poorly suited to the actual needs for the neighborhood. Given the layout and low traffic volume on our road, a full-scale hammerhead appears to be an over-engineered response to a problem that could be addressed more simply and with significantly less disruption. The road has functioned adequately to this point, and there is no indication that a hammerhead is the only or best solution to address maneuverability or address, or access concerns. So following up on Pete, a private driveway, properly designed, could fulfill the same functional purpose, would allow vehicles, service, and emergency to turn around. Most of our homes in the development already have their own turnarounds in their driveways without, while avoiding the impacts that come with constructing a hammerhead. These impacts could include unnecessary grading, loss of green space, encroachment on nearby properties, and further confusion related to the already misaligned road. Furthermore, introducing a hammerhead could unintentionally reinforce the existing planning error by building permanent infrastructure on a flawed layout. Rather than embedding the mistake more deeply into the development, the town should explore solutions that are proportional, context-sensitive, and reversible if needed, such as a driveway. Choosing a less invasive alternative like a driveway would also help preserve the neighborhood's character and avoid imposing additional burdens on property owners already dealing with the consequences of planning inconsistencies. So a driveway offers a more appropriate, cost-effective, and respectful solution to the issue at hand for all parties in the neighborhood. And it allows greater flexibility should a future resurvey or correction of the roadway alignment be required. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, one more, go ahead. All right, one more. Go ahead.
Hey, my name's Tristan Everett, 222 Maplewood Drive. I live right next to the cul-de-sac with Ms. Morn and Mr. Thomas. First off, I'm against the discontinuance, just to make it clear. But I guess my question to the board is, like, we've seen this on the plan, but who was there during the sidewalk? Like, have you actually seen the proposed hammerhead? Because the discontinuance is contingent upon then the hammerhead being built, correct? So when you look at it, you know, it's like 30 feet from the center point of the new road is going to be to my property line. So when I bought my property, I bought it in good faith as it wasn't going to change. But now you're asking me to be okay with, you know, over half of my property is going to be bordered by roads. And I know we're not talking about the future subdivision plans, but, you know, taking into that account, then three quarters of my property is going to be, you know, bordered by town roads. And I just don't think it's right. I know that it's approved by the planning board because they have to follow the, you know, what the legal roads and how we construct things. But ultimately, I don't think it's right. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right, I keep saying one more. Yes.
Those issues of the heart.
Yeah.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Mike DeLuca. I live at 99 Clearview Drive. You've already heard our concerns about safety, traffic, the impact on our quality of life. I'm obviously against this article, against the conversion, against what will follow. What I do want to bring up is the concept of trust. My wife and I moved here 11 years ago because we trusted this was a quiet, safe place. We trusted it was a community where people came together, supported each other, helped each other. And that this was a town that was concerned about keeping that trust. We find ourselves now in a place where neighbors are making decisions for personal use, personal gain, that affects negatively the rest of the neighborhood, the rest of the community. We've come to many, many meetings over the last year and voiced what we need and what we want and what we trust that you will help us achieve. And we have more meetings. And we have more, you know, opportunities for more meetings. I'm concerned that our trust in the town could be lost. And that really, really bothers me. It bothers me to see what this is doing to this community, what it's doing to the countless number of meetings in our time and your time. And so, you know, we wake up every day and we're having less and less ability to have our choices and our voices heard in the world, in our country, and now in our town. So we are placing our trust in you to make a decision that is good in the short term for us and good in the long term, which will prevent the development that we know is going to follow this. We're trusting you. And we're trusting each other that we can uphold the common good of this community and this town. We're trusting you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right. I'm going to close the public hearing right now. Thank you all. We are going to be voting on this at the end of the meeting under business, so please stay for the rest of our meeting. How about approval of the agenda? Anything to add?
I have.
I have nothing to add to the agenda.
Yep, anything?
I'll approve. I make a motion to approve. Submit it.
Okay, Dan made the motion to approve. Do we have a second? And Phil seconded that. All in favor? Public forum, I actually have an item for public forum. Would you pass those now? The town sent a proposal to the RSU for for an agreement for our use of the rec department at the school. And at their last school board meeting, I understand they discussed it intensely. So one of the selectmen in Kennebunk heard the discussion and went to one of the selectmen in Kennebunk Port and went to me. And we were talking about it. And what they put together was a memorandum of agreement that they would like to send to the RSU, which is from Kennebunk, Kennebunk Port, and Arundel. And it says, "The taxpayers of Kennebunk, Kennebunk Port, and Arundel have paid for the construction, renovation, and upkeep of our schools. These same taxpayers pay for all the services their respective municipal governments provide. In order to save the taxpayers' money, maximize the resources they pay for, we have created this memorandum of agreement. The three towns and RSU 21 agreed to share resources to the greatest extent possible. The scope of that collaboration would be the use of school facilities by town parks and rec program, adult sports teams, sharing of municipal equipment with the RSU if needed, playground installation by municipal highway departments, creating cooperative purchasing agreements instead of negotiating separate contracts." And the other selectmen have just seen this. The one thing I would like to change on this is playground installation by municipal highway departments, if possible, or if necessary, because I don't think our highway department should be installing playgrounds. Would we like to discuss this now or table this for further till our next meeting? Tom?
Yeah, me too. I don't agree with this anyways, but we're going to table it.
All right. And if you come up with some changes, let me know. All right, we are going to table that until our next meeting. In public forum, anyone of the public may comment on any item which is not on the agenda. Phil, you have a comment? Well, that's why I mentioned it, because the playground that we put out here, which is the town playground, was installed by professionals, I believe, weren't they?
That is correct.
The professionals that where we purchased the equipment from, they installed the playground. So that's the one reason why I didn't agree with that. There are a couple other things that I know the other selectmen want to look over and discuss. Yes. That's a question that should be taken up in an.
I would take it up. I would ask the chairman of the RSU school board if you could have that put on the agenda.
Whoops, to be discussed at a school board meeting. Yep, thank you. Okay, approve.
I do have a comment. You said that, I haven't checked the latest school board, but they had that discussion about that? Because I had sent an email out to the chairman saying, what's going on with this? We haven't heard nothing. And so they had that discussion?
I understand they had a discussion. And because no one on the board had any background as to why Arundel's rec department is located in the school, I guess they had quite a discussion on it and decided to turn it over to the facilities committee. And the facilities committee is the one that's going to be working on this.
Was it on their agenda?
I don't know. I just know it was discussed.
We should.
Yeah.
Okay.
But. Okay. Approve the minutes of May 8th, 12th.
Before you go further.
Oh, I'm sorry, Diane.
Just so you're aware, I sat on the school board when the schools were voted on and approved. The space for Park and Rec was built into those plans because Park and Rec had been located at the school forever. As a matter of fact, I even pushed to bring either music or arts into the building so the kids wouldn't have to go back and forth through the buildings and put Park and Rec in one of the other buildings. But they didn't want to do that. But Park and Rec, as long as I have known Park and Rec, and I've lived in this town for 44 years, has always been in the school. It's always been part of the school building, but that is not the case with all the towns. So when Arundel merged in, Park and Rec was part of that. And on the plans, it specifically says on that room, Park and Rec.
The plan is attached to the memorandum, Diane.
Right, we understand that. And that was part of our memorandum that we sent to the RSU to get it in writing.
Yeah, I saw it before, wait. Thank you.
I'll let you know when they sign on that meeting.
Yeah.
But I think it's like 8 o'clock in the morning, or 8:15 or 8:30.
Okay, approve the minutes of May 8th, 12th, and 21st.
I make a motion. We approve the May 8th, May 12th, and May 21st.
Dan made the motion. Do we have a second?
You do, a second.
Second, Tom, a second. All in favor? And we have no committee and board reports? We will go to the manager's report, the public hearing on the York County budget?
Yes, just to let you folks know that the public hearing for that, for their budget is coming up on June 4th, 2025, at the York County Government Building at 6 o'clock in the evening. On it, they also provided us a general budget summary. But more importantly for us, I think the last page tells about our tax commitment for the York County operation, which would be $348,042.16, which is about a 1.4% increase from the previous year.
What was that amount again?
It's 348042. It's in your packet. You have a complete packet. So if you would like, you can go to the public hearing and discuss a little bit more related to it.
Okay. And the town report?
Yeah, just a heads up that it's gone to print. We expect it back either by the end of the week or the first of next week. We'll then circulate it, put a notice on the website if people need a hard copy of it. We'll also have copies available here at the town meeting when folks show up on June 11th. In addition to that, we'll also, I also take the annual town meeting warrant, place explanations to it, and place that on the website as well, as well as having handouts of that to assist the voters on the 11th when they vote.
Can I go back? Keith, the York County budget, that 1.4%, we got that covered in our budget? I mean, we didn't have that when we sat with both boards, so.
It's a separate item that we don't allocate it. We set, when we set the tax rate, we'll take that value into consideration as our overall cost to do business. So that's one we'll discuss it.
Okay, how about the building committee meeting on 5/28?
Yeah, just a reminder, we're going to start our fire station building renovation committee meeting tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock at the fire station with our architects. Port City Architects will be in attendance. They'll get an opportunity to look at the facility that we have. And then my hope is then to come over here around 7 to conduct any meeting and any further discussion you wish to have with the architects. As you know, we do have a preliminary design that we've thrown around our table. We'll share that with the architects as well. And hopefully, they can take that and enhance it a little bit more for us to ensure that we meet all the federal and state standards in terms of construction. And then the other concern that I have and one that I think I'll focus on will be the exterior look of the building and in particular, how those two roof sections may come together. Because we'll be putting in addition to that building on the side where the big parking lot is now. And so I'm really concerned how we're going to tie that all in. I'm sure the architects will be able to share that with us. So tomorrow night, 6 o'clock at the fire station.
Okay. How about the assessor position status?
As you know, the assessor provided us her retirement notices about six to eight weeks ago. She'll be retiring as of June 30th of this year. We are in the process of advertising for a new assessor. I have an interview that will take place tomorrow with the candidate. And I'll keep you posted as to how that process goes.
Okay, how about the public works position status?
Yeah, finally, I have, as of this morning, I had five applicants now for our positions. As you know, they've been very difficult to retain folks to take the positions simply because oftentimes, we had a bunch of experience and training that was required around commercial driver's licenses. We've sort of, not sunset that, but sort of put that in advance to see if we can get candidates to apply. And then we're going to work with them to provide them the training necessary to get the CDL license that they'll need to operate our larger equipment. So that's our goal. Out of the, we need three positions. I have, like I said, four or five at this point that have shown.
It's automatically locked. Sorry about that.
Automatically locks. I'm sorry. It automatically locks at 8 o'clock.
And so I'll keep you posted on that, how it goes.
So, you know, we've done this in the past, right? We've done training for somebody. We've gotten them training after training, gotten them their CDLs, and then they leave and go somewhere else after we provided all the training for them.
That is correct.
Something we can.
That is, that's the gamble that you take. I think this year, we'll try to, and we didn't do it in the past. And it's, we may try to put together some sort of agreement that will have these folks sign to benefit us as well as them if the training is successful.
Next order of business is the order to discontinue the cul-de-sac on Clearview Drive.
Yes, as you know, you've talked about it quite a bit this evening and heard from. and heard from the neighbors in the area. What you were attempting to do, and at this point, you have you have placed a warrant article on your annual town meeting warrant that you've approved for the voters to take some action on this discontinuance. And so this evening, what this order would do would be to proceed forward, as we had discussed previously, to allow the voters as a whole to make a decision on this discontinuance of the road.
We need a motion on this?
Listen, I appreciate everything I heard from everybody about your concerns, neighborhood, safety, et cetera, et cetera. But the fact of the matter is, I think Michael, Mr. Thomas, should have his opportunity to convince people otherwise. And you folks can come to the annual town meeting and put forth everything that you did here this evening in an effort to convince the voters at the annual town meeting not to approve the warrant article. But he should have an opportunity to convince them otherwise. And that's why I will move that the order of discontinuance of Laurel Loop be acted on at the town meeting.
Thomas made that a motion. Do we have a second? Phil seconded that. All in favor? Anyone opposed? So it will be on the warrant at town meeting for everyone who is there at the town meeting to vote on.
I'll send it down for your signatures.
We also need to discuss the
Oh, yes.
The damages.
We also need
I'll amend that motion, said no damages.
Yeah, yeah, right. Okay. That motion was amended for no damages. All in favor? Yeah, all in favor of
No damage.
Okay. Yes. Oh, no damages. Now, I voted actually against that, so should I not sign this? Although I just probably should have just voted. I mean, I voted for it before, so send it to the town meeting, so. I told Keith we're gonna have to put out a lot of chairs.
Okay, folks, we need to continue on with our meeting.
And next on the agenda is the liquor license for Dutch Elm Golf Course.
Yes, annually, we have Dutch Elm that provides us their application. I've provided you a copy of the application that they now do online. They did provide the rest of the information relative to insurances and layout, so on and so forth. So I would entertain a motion to approve the liquor license as requested.
Motion's been made by Phil.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor? Boy, that was fast.
Yeah, I'll send it on down.
All ready?
That's just for a record.
All right here, okay. There we go, Dutch Elm. While we're sending down Dutch Elm, we have a liquor license for TNT Event Services.
Yes, if you recall, this was a company that came last year as a first time. It's a catering company that works out of her. She has a home occupation where she does catering at remote sites. But she stores alcohol at her property on Senate Road, and she has to file this application. So she's seeking approval once again for the liquor license.
I move we approve TNT Event Services LLC.
Second.
And
Tom.
Tom seconded that.
Yep.
A motion on TNT? All in favor of TNT? Yep, okay, all in favor. Liquor license RW Events.
Yes, this company has provided serious special events at the main, catch me if I'm wrong here.
Yeah. Oh, the main classic car museum?
Yes, the main classic car museum. And they've been doing it for several years, providing the same services again. I would make a recommendation that you approve RW Events.
Is it just one date?
Yes. I believe it's June 21st from 3:00 to 9:30 PM.
Motion we approve RW Events.
Okay. Dan make the motion. We have a second? Seconded by Phil. All in favor? All right, RW Events. And here you go. That's the budget committee on that one. And a memo from North Star Planning.
Yes, I provided it in your packets. Essentially, they're providing us information relative to LD 2003 requirements for housing and looking at various alternatives within our land use ordinance to perhaps make some changes. As I told Sam Picas when I spoke to her, that this is, this really should be forwarded through the planning board and allow the planning board to provide us with recommendations moving forward as to what they think is appropriate for us to modify our ordinance to meet these new statutes. I know that Ryan went to a conference. I think Leo spoke at the conference up in Sunday River last week, I believe, where LD 2003 was hotly discussed. And according to Ryan and folks that were there, that it's ever-evolving. So I'm not sure where this whole thing is gonna go. So I think it's appropriate for the planning board to sort of delve into it and decide what they want to do.
They've already looked at this. Lee J got involved with this, I don't know, not last year, year before last, when it first came out, right? So there are amendments to this one that just never passed.
They're evolving, more amendments to this as we move forward. If you recall, I mean, we were probably one of the first in the state that had ADUs before they were even required. So at one point, we were sort of ahead of the curve. Not sure where we are right now, but I thought maybe the planning board could could give it a discussion with Sam and decide what they'd like to do.
You know, I wanted to have, when we discussed the Dutch Elm thing, I was gonna make a comment about, you know, Diane mentioned some stuff about, you know, subdivisions can't change and whatever. But here it is, the state is forcing us to do that. State is forcing us to, you know, make changes to the land use ordinance. So, you know, subdivisions are not set in stone. There is a process to change them, so that's for sure.
So if there's anything you want to weigh in on it or if you think we should discuss it with the planning board, we certainly can. But I think we're all settled at this point.
Okay. How about the payable and the payroll warrant?
Make a motion, we approve it. Submit it.
Motion's been made, it's submitted. Do we have a second on those?
I have.
Seconded by Phil.
Velma has concerns about the $100 on who it was paid to.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the wording. No, I was laughing about the wording. We paid $100 to have the rabid fox or something euthanized. But it says that a rabid fox bit a person and was euthanized. And I thought, well, who was euthanized? The rabid fox or the person? The way it's worded, it's worded as if it could have been. It was just, and I was laughing when I read it. Now you can just scrap those. One of these. There's more scrap. Did you get a copy of that?
I do.
That can just scrap, we've got enough. I didn't think it was sufficient, but anyway, we'll discuss it further. I will let you know when the facilities committee is meeting.
Yeah. I'm gonna go back and watch the RSU meeting. That's probably why Matt didn't reply back to me.
Yeah.
Well, it certainly doesn't address our issue with the MOU. Ours was specifically focused on building conditions for our parks and recreation department. We didn't talk about the rest of these things that are now being brought up through this issue here, so.
Okay. Payable and payroll warrants, did we make a motion and vote on those?
We did.
We did, okay. Adjournment, do we have anything else?
I only have one thing. See, and I have one of the planning board members here that sits where Dan is. I would welcome to make sure that he doesn't turn the remote off again as he did before.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Motion to adjourn at 8:23 PM.
We have a second? Seconded by Phil's. There we go, all in favor?
Thanks.
Oh, and thanks to Wendy to give it.